Action for the April 25th Board meeting. First on the agenda would be the pledge led by Board Member Terry Hodge.
Congratulations. To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on the agenda? Yeah, I've got one comment on it. You notice at the back of the agenda, we have a list of policies. These are on here for working toward our Board of Distinction. If you have any questions on them, and think any of them need to be changed or looked at, just direct those to Ms. Page, and she needs something else to do next week. And then we do have one policy that we'll have to vote on, that has to be voted on. It hasn't changed, so we'll get to that a little later. Okay, anything on the consent agenda anybody wants to talk about first?
All right. You're trying to go home early too, aren't you?
That's okay.
That's all right. Okay. Mr. Reed? Give us an update on the Matthews property?
Yes, sir. Give you a quick update on the properties that we've been looking to acquire. We have closed on the Christiana property. We closed on that, I think, week before last, so that is a done deal. Everything's closed on that. I met with the attorney for the Matthews last Thursday. We're working towards getting that closed. There were some, one last question came up with respect to whether the landfill posed any risk for that site as a potential school site. We discussed that with the environmental consultants who did the Phase One study with respect to the property. They, their remark is they really have not looked at whether, specifically whether the landfill will pose any issue or not, but they noted it's over a mile away, almost a mile and a half away from the potential school site. That's not anything they would normally check and not anticipate any issues being presented, given the distance that exists between the landfill and the proposed site there in the Matthews property. Also, Trey Lee is checking with TDEC, with the state, who, and talking to the individual who oversees and is responsible for supervising the landfill area there, to see if there's any concerns from TDEC's perspective that the landfill might pose to that as a potential school site. So, all that's going on, we're still moving towards closing on it, so there are normal title issues being, getting worked through and all that now. And so, assuming everything comes through and the landfill does not pose any issues from anybody probably looking to close that here, funding's approved, county's ready to fund it as soon as we're ready to close on it.
Okay. Anybody got any questions?
Just pointing out that the Walter Hill Elementary School is closer and nobody's said a word for 30 years. Just pointing that out.
All right. Next, we have, gonna have an S.A. update by evidently the bravest man in the representative in Nashville, the only one to show up, Mr. Charlie Baum. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, thank you all for having me. It's good to see you all again. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to tell you a little bit about the details of this bill. I'd like to point out some of the advantages and disadvantages that I see in the bill, and also comment on the ways that I think it would and would not affect Rutherford County. Would you like for me to start by giving sort of an overview of the, of the specific details at the moment?
That would be fine.
Okay, well, then that's, that's what I'll do. This is referred to as the ESA legislation, where ESA stands for Education Savings Account, Education Savings Accounts. In a way, an ESA is a form of voucher. A voucher is a little bit different, though. A voucher is where you would use the money for tuition at a school, and an ESA is that, but it's a little bit broader in the sense that you can do a few more things with the money. You can pay for books, tutoring, and in some cases, some travel. The current bill that's being discussed is sort of a, has a five-year time horizon. The first two years of the plan would be spent ramping up, getting the plan in place, and the ESAs would be awarded in the last three years of the plan. It would be awarded, they would be awarded in years three, four, and five. And then the plan would have to be reauthorized, or it would be terminated. The size of the plan, though, is, is important. The legislation as currently written would provide up to a maximum of 5,000 ESAs in the first year, but it could increase to a maximum of 15,000 in the final year. I guess I'll say that's year five. To put this in perspective, at the moment, there are approximately a million Tennesseans in public schools. So, 5,000 divided by a million is about one-half of 1 percent. In that sense, I think some could characterize this program as being modest. It's modest from the standpoint of affecting only 5,000 out of, out of a million Tennessee students. Let me comment about the dollar amounts that were, that the ESAs would include. The average ESA would be an amount equal to about $7,300. It's not a specific amount because it changes with the local school district. It's determined by the BEP formula. For some districts, it would be a little bit higher. For some districts, it would be a little bit lower. But in order for someone to receive this ESA, they would have to meet four eligibility criteria, or at least four primary eligibility criteria. First of all, it would have to be a student from a school district that has at least three priority schools. The priority schools are the ones in the bottom percentiles of the, the school rankings. At the moment, there are only five counties that have school districts with at least three priority schools. And of course, you all know the good news is, in Rutherford County, we have zero priority schools. There are zero priority schools in the Murfreesboro City School System as well. So, that's one factor that would make Rutherford County ineligible for this, for these ESAs. There's a second eligibility criteria, and that has to do with income. In order for the ESA recipient to be eligible, they would have to have a relatively low income level. These are for low-income students. I can tell you the precise amount. It would need to be household income of no more than two times the free lunch level. If you want even more details, the free lunch level is a level that's equal to 130 percent of the federal poverty level. So, two times the free, the free lunch level would be two times 130 percent of the poverty level. That means it's an income level of no more than 260 percent of the poverty level. Those statistics may not mean much to you, so let me give you what that would be for a household of four. For a household with four people, 260 percent of the poverty level would be about $65,000. So, these are targeted for low-income, or at least relatively low-income individuals. There's a third criteria, and that is that the individual must have been in a public school. These ESAs would not be awarded to people who are already in private schools, who have been in private schools for an extended period of time. You would have been in a public school. If you're awarded the ESA, then you, you could use it for schooling in another place. And then the fourth criteria would be no, no homeschooling, or at least that's in the House's version of the bill. Homeschoolers would not be eligible. In the Senate version of the bill, which I think will, will, I hope will be, would be in the final version of the bill if it passes, would be a provision that would hold the school districts that have ESA recipients harmless financially. What that means is, this legislation would provide the money for these ESAs. That's an amount of about $7,300 per recipient. This legislation would provide the money for the ESAs. It would also, the Senate version at the moment, and the money is available in the House version to do this, would also provide the, the school district with pay, with the, with the income, with the money that they would have received if the student had not received an ESA and had not left the school system. In that regard, the legislation is designed to hold the school districts harmless financially. So, the school district receives the same amount of money that they would have if the student had not received the ESA, but the student, of course, has received the ESA on top of that. I guess one way to look at this would be that the school district would not receive any decrease in funding. Another way to look at it would be that the school district actually receives more money on a per capita basis. If several students take an ESA and leave the school system, but the school system receives the same amount of state funding, then on a per-student basis, the average would be a little bit, a little bit higher. That is designed to help the schools, the priority schools, improve. So, that some students get an ESA and move to a, a different situation, but the school and the students that are left behind in it are left with the same amount of money, or a higher amount per capita, to use for improvement. With those details, I think I'd like to point out maybe three advantages that I see of the legislation, and then three disadvantages that I see of the legislation. I think there's three ways in which the recipients of these ESAs could be helped. One is probably the most obvious, and that would, the intention would be an academic benefit. If a student is in a priority school or a failing school, the student could take the ESA, the money, and move to a different school that hopefully is more successful academically. I think that's the obvious benefit. I think, though, that the ESAs could be used by other students that maybe are not even motivated by academic concerns. It could be a student that is bullied. It could be a student that is having trouble with their peers, they're being harassed, and really, they need a fresh start. If they're from a low-income household that can't afford anything else, then that student more than likely would have to stay in the school system. I'm sure the school administrators would do everything they could to prevent bullying and harassment. But we all remember times when we've been around peers that, when we felt uncomfortable. It may be the case that a student needs to move to a different school for social reasons, and an ESA could be used for a low-income student to have a second start or a new start in that regard. And then the third type of potential benefit would be a student that has some type of special need, whether this would be a, a, a physical or, or mental disability, a student that might have a special need offered by another setting that isn't offered in, in public schools. Having said that, I am aware that public schools provide a tremendous amount of resources for all kinds of students, but they're, and so it may be unlikely that a student would, would need an ESA to move to a different situation due to some special limitation or need, but the ESA would provide that. I think what I'd like to talk about next are some things I don't like about this legislation, some things that I think are shortcomings. One is that in order to be the ESA recipient, you just need to be in a school district with three priority schools, but you don't necessarily need to be from one of those priority schools. I think that's a real shortcoming because I think this legislation is intended to help students in academic environments that are, that are not successful. I wish that that, that part of the bill were defined more narrowly so that the recipients came from, from the priority schools, not from anywhere in the district that had priority schools. Another concern I have is that the testing is not 100 percent common. The students that stay in public schools, of course, over the years will take a wide battery of tests. These tests include math, English, science, and social studies. The ESA recipients originally were only going to be required to take the math and English, I think it's sometimes referred to as ELA, those parts of the test. So, you may wonder, well, what fraction of the total tests would that be? I guess if you go from grades K through 12, if you just took the math and ELA test, then that would be about 35 percent of the assessments. So, the ESA recipients originally would have had to take 35 percent of the assessments. I think in order for us, if this were to pass, in order for us to ever have any chance of knowing whether this is successful, or whether it's a disaster, we need to have common testing, common assessments. That ultimately would help us determine whether this is a good idea or a bad idea. Fortunately, on the House floor yesterday, an amendment was passed that added math, added science tests every other year, and social studies tests the intermittent years, also every other year, to the testing requirements. So, the testing requirements are currently all the math, all the ELA, and half of the science and half of the social studies. I wish it were all, but we are at least moving the legislation in that direction. But I think it's a shortcoming for it not to be all of the, of the same testing. And I think also, a shortcoming of the legislation is that it pertains to school districts that have three or more priority schools. That's a shortcoming because there are some really, really large school districts that are going to always be on that list. The prime example is Metro Nashville. They've got a bunch of schools. It's all under one ELA. They will never move off this list. But then, on the other hand, there are going to be rural districts that have very few schools. I think there are even rural districts that, that don't even have three schools. They will never be on, on this list. Of course, that, that may be what they want, but I think the, the threshold of three priority schools in order to be eligible for ESAs doesn't adjust for the fact that some, some school districts are big and some school districts are small. Let me kind of close my introductory comments before I'll take questions and comments from you all certainly, is to just give Bill Lee's story on why he's interested in this legislation. The governor, a, a number of years ago, sort of adopted, not in a legal sense, but maybe in a mentoring sense, an individual who was in a, a school that was a, a failing situation. The student was not progressing, and Bill Lee took his own money to move the student from that school to another school. This must have been in either Williamson County or in Nashville, Davidson County. The student moves to a different situation, Bill Lee pays for it, the student ultimately graduates, and ends up on a path to success. This sort of frames the governor's point of reference on what he's trying to do. I can tell you that I think the governor is, is a good man, and I think he's trying to do something to help students, in particular, low-income students, in situations where the academics are not as successful as we would like. He's, he's trying to set up a, a program to help these individuals. But I am aware that there are a number of people that are opposed to this legislation, and so I'm here to answer any questions you have and hear your comments.
I've got a couple of questions right quick. In Davidson County, Shelby County, either one of them, do you know how many schools would fit into that, off the top of your head?
Davidson County has one school district. It's got a bunch of schools, and I think about 25 of them are on the priority school list.
Oh, about 25 schools?
About 25. In, in Shelby County, there are five or six school districts. Very different than Nashville. It's not just one school district. There's five or six. There's one for the, the city, the main Memphis. There's one for Germantown, Collierville. I've heard them listed off for me. There's, there's five or six different school districts. Across all the school districts in Shelby County, there are, are close to 40 priority schools. There's another six priority schools in Knox County, seven in Hamilton County. Evidently, there are several in Jackson County, which is where, I'm sorry, Madison County, which is where Jackson, Tennessee is. But again, in Rutherford County, we don't have any. We're a big school district. But to answer your question, 25, approximately 25 priority schools in Nashville, and a pro, and close to 40 in, in Memphis, but that's divided over about five or six school districts.
So, we're probably looking at, say, 60, 70 schools, at population of at least 500 people to a school, right?
Probably, yes.
And we're going to give out 5,000 of these SSs? That's, that's not even going to be a drop in the bucket, because they, there's not going to be some of them that can afford to do this.
5,000 ESAs is, is a small fraction of a million students in the state. Now, some people are, are happy about that, and some people are not happy about that. Some people are glad that the program's very, very small and has a very minimal reach. Others might want it to be broader so more students would be eligible for it. But you're correct in your characterization, whether you consider it to be big or small. It's 5,000 out of a million students, and of course, not all a million students are in Shelby County and Davidson County, but a lot are.
Well, to be exact, it's 185,561 in those two counties.
Okay.
Can I ask a little bit about your, the funding mechanism on this? I mean, you stated that the system would not lose the ADM, the, the student that moves forward, and you also mentioned that the $7,300 was based on the different location. In Rutherford County, it's somewhere close to a 60-40 split, a little bit, a little bit lower there on the, on the, on the state side. So, are we, are we talking about, let's just say, throw out a number here, 9,000 per people expenditure. It's not in, it's not here, but it's close to it. So, we're talking about $4,000, close to that, that, or excuse me, $4,500 or somewhere in that neighborhood that would be allocated for that student that chose to go to another system. Now, what private school do you know of where their tuition is $4,500 a year?
Yeah, that's a good question. The, the average ESA would be worth about $7,300, but you're right, it would be higher in some counties, lower in others, depending on the BEP formula, whether these are high or low-cost counties. But regardless of whether it's 4,500 or 7,300, you're right, there are many private schools that have tuition that's substantially higher than that. Here in Rutherford County, I, I've sort of heard anecdotally that MTCS and Providence have tuition that must be in the range of, I don't know, eight or 10 or $12,000, so that's, that's more. And if you were in Davidson County, we can all think of private schools there that have tuition that's substantially higher than the 7,300. So, $7,300 will not cover tuition at some, or maybe many, of these schools. And so, here's what I think will happen. If the $7,300 is not enough, then these ESAs will be offered, but they will not be taken. The parents won't take the state up on it. The state may offer 5,000 ESAs, but you'll find that a very, very small number are actually used. And the reason in this scenario would be because it's just not enough money. It won't pay for private school. There may be some other parents out there who are low-income and fit this definition or this eligibility criteria, but the parents are willing to supplement that amount with some of their own money. If it were, let's say hypothetically, MTCS and tuition's $10,000, the parent wanted to add another $2,700 to it, then the ESA would help get them there. It's also possible that some of these schools might offer the, what, what we would expect from a university in the form of a scholarship. But if those things are unlikely, if these low-income households are unlikely to supplement the ESA amount, and if the private schools are unlikely to, to award scholarships, then the state will offer 5,000 ESAs, and, and they essentially will have no effect. They will, they, they just won't be used.
And my last thing, and I'll, I'll get out of the way. You know, I, I understand, I, I hear the story that you talked about the governor, you know, and, and being caught in a, a school that's, that's not meeting the needs of the student, but that's not changing that school. What about the rest of them that are left behind?
That's a good comment. There's actually some debate on whether the ESAs, ESAs help the, the recipients or not. But even if they help the recipients, that doesn't mean that they help the students who are left behind. I think that's the important part of holding the schools harmless financially, so that the ESA recipient gets the $7,300, the school systems continue to get the money that they would have gotten if the recipient hadn't left the school. The school gets the same amount of money that they would have had before, or, or again, I know I'm repeating myself, on a per-person basis, or a per-student basis, or a per-capita basis, that's actually a little bit more money. If the stu, school gets the same amount of money, but 20 people leave and take ESAs, they can use that additional money on a per-capita basis to try and improve the school. I think that's very, very important. I do not think you can just forget about the school. Maybe the ESA recipient is better off, but what about those who are, who are left behind? I think it's extremely important for this legislation to hold the schools, the priority schools, harmless financially.
Going back to the other end of the, the question earlier, you're talking about 5,000 students. May not take advantage of this, but let's say 6,000 do. Let's, let's look at that side of it. How are you going to pick those 5,000?
It's a good question. Other states that have vouchers have, some states have had that problem and some states have not. The ones that have had the problem have tended to use lotteries.
We're going to leave it up by chance, if we help these students.
That is what the District of Columbia did. There've been a couple of states that have used lotteries if the program is oversubscribed.
Charlie, first of all, let me just tell you, I appreciate you coming and addressing us tonight. I will say the question Mr. Sterling just asked you. You're the first one I've ever heard answer that question. I've asked it years. What are you going to do with the kids you're leaving behind? What disturbs me, it always has in regards to vouchers. Why don't you take that money and fix it? You talked about disaster a while ago. I think we're going to continue to have a disaster. That's a hard part for me to understand. Even though you say it doesn't affect us, somewhere along the line, you're taking money out of our pockets, for the state. I would like to see these, these systems fixed and forget all the system. I can, I got back on this thing several years, and I, I pieced a lot of the pieces together. We, we don't have much time to get into all that tonight, but you see I'm putting any more money in these systems. My understanding is, just what little I've read, these systems are on their own.
That, that's a good question. I want to answer your question. Before I do, I want to be clear about the details of this legislation. The Senate's version of the bill currently provides funding allocated to hold the schools harmless financially. The House version of the bill has had that. The money is still in the House version of the bill to do that. It's allocated in the bill. There is an amendment that has popped up late in the process that is wanting to reexamine that. So, I just want you to know that the, the State version holds the schools harmless financially, and the House version has the money in there to do that, but there is still some debate. But to answer your question, if you did provide these priority schools with the funding that they otherwise would have gotten, then one way to look at that is, they're not harmed financially. But of course, the point you raise is, you could use the money that's being used for the ESAs, and instead of awarding ESAs, you could reallocate it to the schools. And you could do that. So, you might look on this as being maybe not a decrease in funding for the schools, but they're not getting the money that's being used to fund the ESAs. And that's a good point. The money could be used for something different. The money could be used for the schools instead of the ESAs, and that's true. The state, with its current budget, has tried to do some things, and I think has succeeded in doing some things in its current budget, to provide more money for education. I'll give you three statistics. The state is increasing funding for the BEP formula in the upcoming budget from the past budget by $46.2 million, that's statewide. It's providing $71.3 million more dollars for teacher salaries. That's a two-and-a-half percent increase from the state's portion of the, of teacher salaries. If the local government matches, then that would be a 2.5 percent increase for teacher pay in their paycheck. If the local entity doesn't match what the state's doing, then it wouldn't be a two-and-a-half percent increase. It's just a two-and-a-half percent increase from what the state allocates to teacher salaries, but it's still a $71 million increase. $30 million more dollars for school safety grants, which is a fancy way of saying S.R. There's a lot of other things I haven't mentioned, but if you add it all up, the amount going to K through 12 education from the state in the upcoming budget compared to the last budget- budget is an increase of two-hundred-and-eleven million dollars. Of course, that increases, that includes the teacher pay, the BEP, the SROs that I mentioned. If you add those and a bunch of other things up, the state is providing two-hundred-and-eleven million more dollars for K through twelve education. The amount spent on K through twelve education with that increase would be six-and-a-half billion dollars. But then there's also the money that's being used for the ESAs. The money that's being allocated in this legislation for the ESAs is twenty-five million dollars a year. That money could be used for the schools, like you say. I guess on a proportion basis, if two-hundred-and-eleven million dollars is being added to schools in the state budget, and twenty-five million on top of that is going to ESAs, then it could all go to, it could all go to the K through twelve through the BEP formula. But I guess about ten percent is being held out for this legislation. And again, it's legislation that may not work, but it might work. It might help some people in some tough situations. So that's a long way of answering your question. The ESA money could instead be used for something else that could go directly for the schools. Schools should be held harmless financially. Actually, there's more money for education in this state budget, but a portion of this money is not being used for K through twelve. It's being used for ESAs, and that's true. It's twenty-five dollars, twenty-five million dollars a year is being used for this legislation for the ESAs.
I've got one more question, and I'll pass it on to somebody else. I think all the board here and a lot of general public follow this whole thing as it's gone through, and it seems like every time they hit a roadblock, somebody throws something else out. In this, my opinion, from your standpoint, I feel like you were strong on what I read. You might tell me different, but I guess the latest thing is all these promises made to rural counties. If you voted for him, voted for him, you've got what you want, okay? If you went against him, you're not good. So I guess my question to you is, what have you got for Rutherford County?
Well, that's a good question and a fair question. Some of that's politics. I can give you a few details on how some of that came about. I did read the article in the Tennessean. The governor presented his budget in early March. This legislation was discussed and voted on in subcommittee, Education Committee, Finance Committee, several times later on. I am on the Finance Committee, and we have the option of submitting what are called appropriation amendments. And I submitted several. And these appropriation amendments were ones that I intended to get funded through the House Finance Committee, not through the governor. The governor had already proposed his budget, and it actually had come out in early March, like I said. The governor, kind of like with our county budgets, a month or so later, updates the budget in order to recognize additional revenue. The state budgets conservatively, just like Rutherford County does, and so as you get a little bit closer to the passage of the budget, sometimes additional money and revenue is, becomes apparent. So the governor did update his budget. It included some additional revenue, and with that, he looped in some of the projects that had been filed, like legislation or like bills, by different legislators. He looped them into his revised budget. But I did not make any deals with the governor, and when I've talked to him about this, I didn't ask for anything. The amendments that I filed, I intended to get funded by the House Finance Committee. I sit on the committee. I don't want to say too much, but I've worked with those guys and ladies for several months now, and my intent was to get them funded through that process. I did not ask for them to be funded by the governor, and in fact, I didn't necessarily expect him to add anything to his budget. But he did come up with a revised budget, and he looped some in, and he didn't loop others in. And probably some of that is politics.
It's all politics, not some politics. Basically, bought a boat, is what he did. We'll move on with it, I guess.
What about accountability? How are we going to hold these folks accountable, take the ESAs?
My preference would be for them to take all of the components of the TN ready, and that includes the math, ELA, science, and history. And they're taking a fraction of it, but not all of it.
Talking about misuse of the funds. Say they take the money and they leave, go to another state, or they take the money and they don't do what they say they're going to do. Who's going to manage this? Who's going to keep track of all this?
There will be state officials that will be tasked with this.
We're going to add more people to manage something like this.
There will be some management to it. There should not be a situation where an individual is getting cash. It should be like a website with approved vendors, and you can take your allocation and you can spend it on the website with the vendors that are on the website, but you can't, you wouldn't end up with cash that you could use to buy something with that you're not supposed to be able to.
It's not like a credit card or anything?
Well, I don't know whether it will all be online or whether this will ultimately take the form of some kind of a card, but there would be approved vendors that you would, that would have to be approved by the state that, in order to spend the money. You couldn't take it to a restaurant that hasn't gone through the state system, or at least that's my understanding of it. Some of that gets into, into the computer aspects of this, how you track all that, and we don't want there to be any fraud, that's for sure.
And how are we going to, do you have any examples where ESAs have been successful in other states?
That's a great question. We have heard a lot about studies in the literature, and there's a bunch of them. And if I had to summarize them in one sentence, it would be that the evidence is mixed. If you talk to pro-voucher folks, they'll point you to the studies that show success. If you want to talk to opponents of vouchers, they can point you to some studies that show that they don't work. I've read several of the studies. The, there ends up being two kinds of studies. One, which are based on what would be kind of like a medical experiment where somebody gets a treatment and the other person's the control group, they get a placebo. Those kinds of studies are possible ironically in the states that have oversubscription and therefore use a lottery. The idea is everybody who's applying is sort of in the same boat. Some get it and some don't. And the ones that get it and the ones that don't, it's determined randomly, like you said just a few moments ago, kind of like a medical treatment is given randomly to some, and the placebo is given to the other, to the other folks in the experiment. The District of Columbia is an example like that. There's a study published in 2013 in the Journal of Policy Analysis and Management by peer-reviewed researchers. It shows benefits to vouchers. It uses the D.C. experiment, and it uses what some researchers refer to as the gold standard in experiments where you've got a true treatment and control group that are randomly assigned. But there are other studies that are based on what I'll call observational studies. Some people get the vouchers, some people don't get the vouchers. We compare them, but we're never entirely sure if the two groups are entirely the same. Maybe the people who applied for the vouchers were different in some systemic way that affects whether their scores end up being higher or lower. We try and control for as many characteristics as we can. We try and compare low-income people to low-income people. We try and compare, you know, students that might be struggling academically, who get the ESA, with students who might be struggling academically, who don't get the ESA, and try and draw those comparisons. There's a study in this Journal of Policy Analysis and Management on Indiana. It uses an observational study, and it shows that these vouchers have absolutely no beneficial effects at all. That's probably as much of an answer about academic research as you want, but again, the summary statement that I've drawn is that the evidence is mixed. And if you talk to one group, they'll hand you the study that they want you to read, and it'll show one thing, and there'll be another group that'll hand you a different study. Both are published in peer-reviewed journals, so I can't say for sure that it works.
We're gambling with this extra thirty-six million dollars here that we're going to hand out for ESAs.
The ESA bill has an annual cost of twenty-five million dollars.
Twenty-five million.
It may not work, but it's an opportunity to see if helping, it's an opportunity to see if you can help some specific students in low-income situations in some priority schools that maybe have academic problems or maybe have problems with their peers. Maybe they're being bullied, maybe they have a mental or physical need that requires some type of special care. It's a way to see if you can help those specific students in what amounts to two counties. It's Davidson County and Shelby County for the most part. It's a program to see if you can help those students. I think it's modest. It's twenty-five million out of a two-hundred-million-dollar increase in funding for education from the state. It's five thousand students out of a million. I think it's modest in that sense.
I'll go back and just, I'll be quiet after this. We still have kids at failing schools, and we're not fixing the failing schools. That's the whole issue here. I know why we can't get our mind around that and correct that problem. I don't understand. It just, who's me why we can't figure this out? Is it the administration? Is it the community, the culture? I mean, there's a lot of factors are involved in why these kids are failing. And I don't think anyone has really went there and tried to figure that out. And I'm, thank God, we've got a community like Rutherford County that does care about education, and we support it, and we're going to fight for it. And I'll be quiet.
Mr. Baum, I appreciate you coming tonight. We've swapped emails and conversations, and you've returned both, which makes you stand out, by the way, from every other legislator that represents Rutherford County. I'll just let you know that as far as I'm concerned, because I received nothing from anybody else. I just have just two or three comments here, and then a statement to kind of build on what Mr. Young said. If, if the state wrote Davidson County a check for twenty-five million dollars and mailed it to them today, all right, which by the way, will not pay for an elementary school, a new school, who won't do it? It'd take about thirty to thirty-five million to do that. I don't believe you'd notice a difference in two years. I don't think you'd know that they ever got a dime, no matter how they spent the money. I don't think you'd ever notice. Now, maybe I'm wrong about that, but I'm pretty sure, and I'm not talking about Memphis, I'm talking about Nashville because I was born there, so I'm, you know, okay. Also, a comment that surely you've heard before. I was embarrassed, I guess would be the best thing to say, by the general methods that this bill was passed. I mean, it looked awful. I can't think of anything, many years, going back to the income tax days maybe, when the state legislature looked so bad in the House of Representatives. Not you personally, maybe, but Mr. Baum, you and I are friends, and we've known each other for a while, but this piece of legislation does not pass without your vote. Now, I've been in that situation too, so I know it's not just you. And it also bothers me to build a little bit on what Mr. Young said in Mendego. We have a Tennessee Department of Education that if you've been keeping up, and I assume you have, that in the past five or six years particularly, they have really struggled. I mean, to do almost anything, they have really had a hard time. And they've changed directors there, and then they changed directors again with someone that had zero experience in what we're talking about here. And five of our six, counting yourself, of the people that represent Rutherford County in the last three years or so are new. And I'm just, I'm kind of wondering, I just don't see that, how this is going to be administered successfully. I'm just really worried about that. When we can't give a test statewide, evidently finally, we're finally doing it, it looks like. But anyway, that bothers me, and I think you can tell, and certainly by my emails to you, that we are concerned with a lot of things. But the money is the bottom line. We don't have the money, we can't do the stuff that we're supposed to be doing. And we're afraid that we're going to have to help pay for this eventually, or we're going to receive less from the state, which means we have to raise less and get a tax increase through the County Commission, and you and I both know how hard that is to do sometimes. And you mentioned two-and-a-half percent in Mendego. This board, if you've been keeping up, and I strongly suggest you have, we doubled the two-and-a-half percent request. Now, what the County Commission will say, I don't know. And we did it for bus drivers certified and classified, and some other increases in there to try to pay our employees fairly. So we went far past what the state did. I don't guess there's a question lurking in there anywhere, but I suggest one thing to you that we're going to have to be very, very careful as to how this program doesn't balloon on us in a year, and then two, and then three, and then suddenly you turn around and it's like tin carrie. It went from a great program to this mammoth program that almost bankrupted the state. I mean, if it hadn't been for Phil Bredesen and the state legislature, by the way, it would have. So I don't want this to happen, you know, with this right here, and I've talked enough. I appreciate, I do appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Representative Baum, and yeah, thank you for being here. I know that this was not an easy crowd to face, so, but I do have a few questions for you. My understanding is your background, your professional educational background, you're, is economics correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you mentioned earlier that the budget that's been allotted for this voucher was, what, twenty-something million?
Twenty-five million dollars for the ESAs. And then, of course, the LEAs or the local school, they're getting their money on top of that.
Okay, and the ESAs were budgeted for could go up to seventy-three hundred, was that right?
The average amount would be seventy-three hundred, but that's not exactly the amount for everybody. It would be...
Right. So if there were five thousand of those, according to my math, that's thirty-six million five hundred, not twenty-something million. So...
That's an excellent...
Where's the math coming from?
That's an excellent question. I asked the exact same question in the Education Committee. The way this is designed to work is the twenty-five million is allocated for the program in year one and in year two. The ESAs are not awarded until year three. So with this head start in funding, it becomes possible to fund the ESAs. There's two years where the twenty-five million is set aside, but ESAs are not awarded.
So we're building a coffer, basically, to fund those when that third year comes up?
Yes, in this two-year ramp-up period.
So who's going to pay for it ultimately?
The twenty-five million. It is allocated out of the state's budget.
Which would mean taxpayers?
Yes.
There are a lot of organizations that have been lobbying hard up there at the state legislature to push this through. I don't have, I'm sure they've been in your office. I've seen some of them. In the last probably week in of itself, knowing what radio ad spots cost, because I worked in advertising, it's been a long time ago, but they're pretty expensive, I would venture to say that some of these groups have spent hundreds of thousands, if not more, of dollars in advertising, basically using our new governor as a, as a, as a spot in those radio spots. Whether it's Children's First or the American Federation for Children, these organizations, why would you think, you know, with your economics background, why would you think these groups are spending all that money to make this happen? Do you really think those organizations are that concerned about a few thousand children in the Tennessee school system and getting them into a better school? Or is there money involved in this? Because that is a school of thought that this is all about, moving it to privatization and follow the money. So I really would like to know your perspective and take on that, because they're spending a lot of money funding campaigns, legislators' campaigns as well.
I can't, I can't say that I really know what their intentions are. I have spoken with the governor about this several times. I do think he's a very good man who's interested in helping some students in some very difficult situations. I think in his mind, he's got a personal experience where he was able to help an individual get out of a failing situation on the path to success. I think in his mind, he looks on this program as a way to... I think in his mind, he looks on this program as a way to help a relatively small number of people in some fairly unique circumstances, in some specific geographic locations. I don't think that the governor is, has any ulterior motives.
And I wasn't necessarily suggesting that he was, but I do believe that some of those groups do. So, but anyway, a couple other questions, and I'll pass the baton here. There've been a lot of people up there on the plaza lobbying for and against this over the last few months, a lot of activity. Do you, in your, of course, and I know you're a new legislator, do you keep track or records of the emails and the phone calls and the visits you get in your office as far as, and I'm talking about, I'm not talking about paid lobbyists, okay? Forget the folks from Americans for Prosperity and their yellow t-shirts. I'm talking actual constituents. Do you or your assistant keep a log of those visits and those phone calls? And if so, can you give us an idea of the support and the opposition that you heard about as far as stats?
I don't have the specific numbers, but I understand the question you're asking, and certainly there have been a large number of people opposed to this legislation. There's, that's certainly true.
So then that would beg my next question, and I'll be done. Do you feel like you and our other legislators out of this delegation, I won't just put it all on you, truly voted the will of your constituents in passing this legislation?
I feel like my primary responsibility is to Rutherford County. I feel like I have some responsibility to all Tennesseans. This legislation does not directly impact Rutherford County, although we can outline ways in which we're concerned that in the future it might. But in Rutherford County, we don't have any priority schools. We have excellent schools here. In fact, I've got three students in public schools in this county. If you gave me a voucher or an ESA, I wouldn't take them out of the school system. I've got no personal interest in ESAs. And I suspect most people in Rutherford County feel that way. So if my primary responsibility is to represent Rutherford County, and Rutherford County is not impacted by this, and if anything, we're getting more money from the state for K-12 education, including SROs, teacher salaries, BEP funding, then I don't want to turn a blind eye to some students in some very, very different parts of the state that may be struggling. If this is an initiative that might be able to help them, given its modest scope in terms of 5,000 ESAs out of a million students, I'm willing to give it a try. It's certainly a big emphasis by the Lee administration. He wants to do things to help education. This is one of the things he wants to try. I can't, I don't see that this has a negative impact on Rutherford County, and if it offers the opportunity to potentially help some students in Memphis and Nashville, that's kind of the bottom line, I'm willing to give it a try.
Representative Baum, I want to thank you for being here as well. I have a few questions, just for clarification. You say it's 211 million in addition built into the budget, the governor's budget. Are we saying that 25 million of that, 211, is gonna be allocated, or is the 25 million in addition to the 211?
I think the 25 million is in addition to the 211 million. 211 million is the total increase in state funding for K-12 education, and it includes things like teacher salaries. On top of that, there is this ESA legislation, which would have a price tag of $25 million this year, and that's on top of the $211 million. At least, that's my understanding. I believe that's correct.
So in addition to, then?
Yes.
Okay. I think, now, comments. For me, as a parent of students in our system, and I agree with you, we have great exceptional schools here in Rutherford County. It concerns me that we put more faith in private schools and their ability to educate our students than we would in ourselves. If the state funds us and has enough confidence to fund us to 60%, which in reality, a fully-funded BEP would probably be a favorable alternative to what we're doing here, it disappoints me that we don't have enough confidence in the people who educate our kids every single day across the state. And more importantly, or to that point, you know, if the governor would come and maybe walk with Mr. Spurlock or the leaders of our community, maybe we can implement something on a state level that would help other districts. Instead of allocating our tax dollars, which we're all part of that, it seems like there should be an alternative way to get to a greater outcome for our students than to start manipulating money. Because we all know, it might be one year, two year, but down the road, it's gonna eventually affect us. It's gonna affect our students. And that money, no matter what we say about management, how can we make that guarantee? We can't make that guarantee. I mean, just a simple point that Ms. Moore made of the 25 million this year, 25 million next year, well, in reality, it's 36 million is closer to the number. So I think there's a lot of, from my perspective, I don't want to say mistruths, but manipulation, maybe, and not necessarily you, but in the grand scheme of things. Information on this legislation has been incredibly hard to find. You stand here tonight, and I appreciate your attendance, but then you say there might be another amendment coming through that could take away that holding us harmless. You know, there's more questions than answers. It's unfavorable on so many levels, and at the end of the day, our students, our children, whether it affects Rutherford County this year or not, we're eventually going to get that, and our students are going to get that. And it disappoints me that we're choosing this route instead of investing in our students more fully to improve our systems, but we put confidence in private schools or maybe eventually homeschooling, which I have great confidence in our public school system. So thank you for being here, but it concerns me.
And I realize the details of the legislation seem to change, and it makes it hard to get a sense of what's going on. Kind of makes me wonder whether it's best to have a meeting like this early on in the process, when you still have a lot of time to do things with the legislation, or whether it's best to do it at the end, when you know exactly what the legislation is gonna look like, but then it's too late because it's already passed. Complicating all this is there's a House version and a Senate version, and they are not the same. They will have to become the same in order for this to become law, and that may not be possible. The vote in the House was very, very close, and the vote in the Senate Finance Committee was also a one-vote margin. So it may be that the two chambers are not able to agree. But adding to the difficulty of getting accurate details about the law is it's changing over time, as it goes through committees and gets amended, there's two different versions. So I think it does make it complicated to get a sense of what the details really are. Here's what I think the Lee administration would say in response to your comment about funding. One of the criticisms of the legislation is we should instead use this money, we should put this money in education, we should use this money to improve schools. I think the Lee administration would say, if that would help schools, and it probably will, but if it would help schools, or to the extent that it would help schools, we're at the state level gonna increase funding for K-12 education by 211 million dollars. To the extent that more money helps, that's a lot more money. But the Lee administration wants to take a small amount, 25 million, and instead of adding that to the 211 million, pull it out to try this initiative, which, again, given the evidence, we really don't know whether it will work or not. But if it does work, it might be a way of finding out new approaches to help certain students in certain areas get a better education. But to the extent that money will help, if we allocate more money to schools, that's what'll make a difference, let's fully fund. The governor, I think, is thinking, well, we're providing a lot of additional money. We could provide a little bit more, but we're gonna set this aside to try an initiative.
Anyone else?
I thank you, Representative Baum, for being here, and thank you for seeing me when I come down to the legislature. As you are new, I'm new also. So kind of my calculations, because it's gonna be a five-year deal, is it really, truly gonna be 2024 and 2025 before we actually see any results from this program?
That's a good question. I suppose the first results would come the year after we have some initial ESA recipients. They'll take some tests.
So it'll be at least three years?
The first recipients would be in year three. You would want to test them, I suppose, at the end of that year, so it'd sort of be year four before you know...
It's really gonna be longer than, it's gonna be longer.
Are they doing better or worse? And even then, it's just sort of one year's worth of testing. The more data you get, the more you can be sure about the results. But it would be a while, yes.
Has there been any other discussions about anything that they're gonna do? Because I know there's, all of us on this board are ready and willing to say, if you got the federal government out of it, it would probably save us a lot of money. We'd probably come out ahead with all the unfunded federal mandates that we have. That alone would probably save across the state a whole lot of money. And if we took the federal mandates out, we could do something with our curriculum, and that would help too. So I think that there's a lot of things that they're not listening to their constituents about, and if they're not discussing anything else between the next two, three to seven years, even if he's a two-term governor, it's gonna be a long time before we see any kind of return on this money. And then we still, like Mr. Young said, we're still gonna have failing schools.
Yes, and I think in the meantime, you're correct. We want to be thinking about other ways to improve education above and beyond ESAs. We want to find ways that we can remove some of the federal government regulations that would help local authorities provide better education, and if some of those regulations are at the state level, then that's stuff people like me need to hear so that we can go back and make changes at the state level that would help you all.
So tell me, there's a 6%. Now, I've looked at both bills, and you know, that's a moving target for everybody, but I seem to remember a 6% administrative fee. Does that include building the website and all the accoutrements that come with the ESA program? The 6%? Is that just the administrative fee? Is that gonna build a website, or is that just running the program?
I do not know. There is an administrative fee, but I'm not sure if it's for personnel only or whether it would include the website.
There's been no discussions on a contract for who's gonna build a website, or...
Not that I know of. There may be officials that have discussed that, but I'm not...
And there's been no discussion about a clawback provision, because as we all understand it, these parents can take the money and go to that school for one day and spend that money, and they can return the next day back to public schools, and the money's not gonna follow them.
The legislation may say something about a clawback provision, and I just don't recall what it is.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see.
Or maybe not. I've heard about...
Like I said, it's a moving target, and I will give you that. I just hate that, or I feel like myself, that we had the county school resolution and the city school resolution, along with the county commissioners, that said no. And our representatives are going against our wishes. And, you know, there's not one person on this board that wouldn't go to Nashville to help on their school board. They've seemed to reached out to a lot of people on the federal level, the DeVosses and all the privateers, but they're not talking to the people who are sitting over there on that table, who have the information. They could tell you, here's how you can save some money, here's how you can better education. So my question is, do they want to?
I hope they want to.
Well, I thank you for coming, and I know, I know this is a crowd that we all disagree with how you voted, and I guess we'll see how that turns out for you in the future. But thank you for coming.
I thank you. Thank you for your comments and questions.
Mr. Sandy.
I'm looking more on the funding side down the road. On the special ed ESAs, and we do not have that many of them, but basically, say, we'll use that 70, well, I'll say 7,000, it'd be easier to do the math. So this $7,000, and these have been in place, this is their year, we don't have a lot of them in Rutherford County, but, so this $7,000 amount, that includes our county's state funding and our county's required local match to make up that 7,000, about, say, 30, 31%. So when I get my BEP payments from the state, then I am charged $7,000 for each SPED student with, so essentially, 31% of that is coming out of our local funding. We have the concern that as this program spreads and develops, that that is the situation we will face, that it will not be a five-year pilot program, but as it spreads, we will be, we will be required to turn over, say, 31%. When you get into metro county, ah, metro, and I don't know about Shelby County, it's probably even higher, much higher percentage, to our current 37. But being comfortable that that will not happen at some point in the future, I think is some of what is bothering us. And then the other piece we have, just having worked through the language that comes out, and I'm not meaning to slam the governor or the legislature, but every year at the Spring Fiscal Conference, we go in early May this year, Spurlock will be here for a person, we get the summary of what money has been added. And a lot of what's added is just, of course, normal cost of living and all that, and not enhancing items. Our growth position, our growth students, and we tend to grow 1,000, 1,200, we've had some down years, but something like that. I also have the concern that as this program unfolds, somehow, these ESAs will impact our growth numbers and not ours. And the funds will be pulled out that way, growth funds, of the ESAs that we're gonna have.
Yes, and I certainly understand the concern that money would be taken to finance this program from other school districts. And certainly, that would not be what I would want to happen. In year one, that wouldn't happen. There would be more money actually allocated to K-12 education, so it wouldn't occur in that in year one. And I suppose when you get to future budget years, you'll have the option to expand the program or terminate the program if you want to. It'll be a different group of elected officials, and they may find that it's worked, and they want it to be larger, or they may find that it hasn't worked at all, and there's fraud, and they want to discontinue it entirely. But for this budget year, which is all we can vote on at the moment, there is more funding for education. The LEAs that would have ESAs are held harmless financially, so you're talking about the local portion. It wouldn't go to the ESA recipient at all, at least not in the Senate's version, and the House's version has the money in there to hold these districts harmless. So they wouldn't experience what you've described with the local portion being paid to a student.
My concern is more that the SPED model will wind up being the model after this pilot. That would have an incremental...
You know, in order for that to happen, I would imagine that ESAs would have to be awarded in Rutherford County, and Rutherford County doesn't have any priority schools, and so my hope is that as long as Rutherford County...
Version two.
My hope is that a school, an LEA that has good performing schools like Rutherford County or Murfreesboro City, this never is an issue. It's only an issue in Davidson County and Shelby County, but with 25 and 40 priority schools in those counties, this is an area where you do want students to have another opportunity, another option.
I just got one more question, maybe fair or not. Could you go over the new charter legislation?
Yes, I'd be happy to. The original charter bill, well, let me back up for a second. Charter schools, charter applicants can be awarded, can have their application approved currently one of three ways, this is my understanding. One is through the local school authority. One is through the local school authority. A second way is on appeal with the state Board of Education. And a third way is through the Achievement School District. Governor Lee's initial charter schools bill, which, for those not keeping track of all, all these details, is a different bill. It went through before the ESA bill. Governor Lee's original charter school bill was written to create a separate commission to award charter schools. We'll call it a charter school commission. And this process would, would have operated independently and separately from the local school boards. So that a charter school or a charter school applicant could have gone directly to this commission and been approved. That did go in front of the Education Committee. Several of us did say that that, that was not acceptable to award charter schools without going through local school boards. We said we wanted to preserve that process. And I'll give the governor credit for being flexible. He listened to us. Some of us talked to him privately. He listened to our concerns and basically amended his legislation, more legislative changes. He amended his legislation so that any charter school applicant would have to go through the local school board, which is currently the case. That's no change at all. So that really all that was left from the legislation was that it was a special commission going to approve the charter, going to review the charter applicant rather than the Tennessee State Board of Education. That's really all that was left of the legislation. The charter applicant would still have to go through the, the local school authority, and if they're turned down, they, they could only go to the, the commission on appeal. Even that legislation has, has generated considerable concern. One part of the concern was, who's going to be on this commission? Is this going to be a commission that's going to be stacked by the governor? And I was concerned about that too. But the composition of the members of this commission sound like they're about the same as the composition of the members on the, on the Tennessee, in the, on the Tennessee school board that would have, that currently review the charter applications. For example, the commission would have nine members. Currently, the Tennessee Board of Education has nine members who review these charters. The commission's nine members are nominated by the governor and approved by the General Assembly. Currently, the Tennessee State Board of Education's nine members are nominated by the governor and approved by the General Assembly. There are some differences. The commission is supposed to have one member from each of Tennessee's grand divisions. That means one member from East Tennessee, one member from Middle Tennessee, and one member from West Tennessee. And that's a little bit different than the composition of the nine members with the Tennessee State Board of Education. They were supposed to have one member from each of Tennessee's nine congressional districts. Ours is, for example, the one that Dejarle holds. Currently, the, I think it's the Tennessee State Board of Education was supposed to have one student and one teacher on there. So there was a little bit of a difference in, in how the, the composition was to be structured. But basically, I felt like the, the approval process is going to be about the same, or would be about the same as it is right now, which makes you wonder, well, why would the governor even run legislation like that if it's just going to be nine, nine people over here on a commission instead of nine people with the Tennessee State Board? And I really don't know, I don't know that he would have run the legislation if that's all that we're going to do. That's just all that was left of the legislation. It went in front of an education subcommittee, and Tom Leatherwood and myself were extremely concerned about not going through the local school authorities. We told him we couldn't support it under those circumstances, and so it was modified, and what was left was not much.
Last question. Going back to the start of that, what was his reasoning for going away with the LEAs?
The legislation originally would have provided a direct path to the commission, don't have to go through the LEA at all. And if I had to speculate, I probably shouldn't be speculating too much on, on camera, I think a little bit of this is directed, again, at the same counties that we've talked about before. I think it's directed a little bit at Davidson County. Over the past five years, there have not been many instances where the state has disagreed with the local school boards. Over the last five years, there have been 21 charters, applications get denied, who have appealed to the Tennessee State Board of Education. And of the 21 appeals, the state has upheld, has backed up the local authority on 18 of them. There were only three out of the 21 that the state heard the appeal and sort of overturned what had been done at the local level. So I think there's generally a lot of agreement between the state and the local level on whether the charter applicant should be approved or not. Here in Rutherford County, I can't think of the last time we've had a charter applicant. I've talked to several of you all, either on the telephone or by email, and I think that several of you have been able to remember one charter application, and it was such a poorly-written charter application, it was such a disaster that it was turned down, and they didn't even consider appealing, or at least they didn't appeal. And so in Rutherford County, it really hasn't been an issue. When I say some of this must be directed at Davidson County, there has, there has been a period in Davidson County where the Davidson County School Board or the Metro Nashville, I should call it the Metro Nashville School Board, was receptive to charters, and they approved them. Carl Dean as mayor was in favor of approving many of these charters. Composition on that, that school board changed, perhaps even personalities became in conflict, and now the, the Metro Nashville School Board is much more anti-charter than they were just five or 10 years ago, or at least it's my understanding. I haven't followed it terribly closely. And so now they're not approving any charters. I think this is, this was originally legislation that was probably aimed at Davidson County and maybe Shelby County, to some extent like the ESA legislation is.
Anyone else?
If I may, Representative, going back to the charter legislation, just to make sure that I understood, so that this commission that they were proposing, was it formed or, or did it not pass at all? I'm a little confused over how that shook out.
The charter bill did pass. The commission will be formed. And I should add that the Tennessee State Board of Education has told us that it is their recommendation to do this. They feel like setting up this commission is a best practice, not a best practice they've come up with, a nationally recognized best practice. And the reason they've given for this is, they say, it is not ideal, it is not a best practice, to have the same board that oversees policy simultaneously oversee the authority to grant these charters, that there should be some kind of separation of power. The best practice is to have the authorization entity be different than the entity that oversees and reviews and assesses whether the charter is successful or not.
I might just, might you sense my observation on that for what it's worth? We've just added another layer of senseless state bureaucracy.
It would seem to be that way, but I think that the same resources that are used to fund and facilitate the nine members on the Tennessee State Board of Education, those resources will essentially just be transferred over to the commission. If there's, if, if there's expenses associated with one of these committees, those expenses can be used for the other committee so that it won't really create another, a new committee or new expenses. It's just going to be sort of a transfer, the transfer being transferring the group out of the Tennessee State Board of Education so that they can have more independence.
Okay, I think I've, I've got a comment that there are 60 or 70 failing school districts. The only way that you're going to fix a failing school district is good teachers and good staff like this sitting over here. If you don't have that, those failing school systems have been failing for years. Why hadn't our Commissioner of Education stepped in and done something about it?
Some of these failing schools have been failing schools for a long period of time. We had a representative from the floor yesterday say that in her district, or the district she represents, the, the local school board in her district, has four schools that have been priority schools for 18 straight years. Her comment was, she wants to try something different. I'm not saying that we all agree with her, but certainly some schools have been on this list for a long period of time. They've gotten more money over, over the years. This is an approach to try something different.
Well, money's nice to have, but it doesn't fix everything, right? But there is one other thing you could fix for us. For many years, Mr. Jordan and you served on the commission. We made Rutherford County what it is today. People come here, what, 23 right now? We worked hard to build up industry, jobs. When it comes time to get our money, then the state says, well, you've got the ability to pay. And Mr. Sandbig says, I need more money, and they're not giving it to us. You know, I don't, I don't think we need to penalize Rutherford County or Williamson County or Wilson. The ones that are doing well are doing well. We should get enough money to operate on. Now, we do get a little extra every now and then for, what was it, last year, for building or growth or something?
The growth is just partial funding that you get for students you've already got, new students who've come in in the course of your year.
So we could use at least that given, taken away. I do appreciate you coming. I know we've kept you a long time, and I hope you get overtime paid.
Well, thank you for having me. Thank you for listening to my comments. I appreciate it. Worked with all of you for a long period of time on the commission. I'll, I'll add one, one or two more comments, just a little bit of good news. We have heard your comments on a number of other pieces of legislation, and I think we've been able to accommodate on, on all of them. Just a one-minute rundown, House Bill 301 that had to do with Director of Schools and Elections. We got that one stopped. House Bill 1380, arming teachers. House Bill 1276, changes to the TSBA, sort of the lobbying entity. I think that, we, we did stop that bill. I was on the committee that did it. House Bill 91 that has to do with portfolios, we're providing a little bit more flexibility on K, kindergarten and first grade portfolio requirements of teachers, they're going to have more options next year. And I've heard your director's comments on House Bill 1244, the one that has state PE requirements. We have relaxed those. That's a list of legislation I've heard from at least one member of this board on, and I think all of those pieces of legislation have, have been handled to your liking without me going into a lot more details, because I know that you've heard about all the details from legislation that, that you want to hear tonight. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Earl, number 11 there.
All right, number 11, Rutherford County.
Skip that one. That'll be here.
Number 12.
Oh, 12.
All right, Smyrna High School Auditorium naming on Tab 2. Administration at Smyrna High School has requested named the theater auditorium after Shannon Williams. The facility, we call it the Shannon Williams Fine Arts Auditorium. Mrs. Williams made an outstanding contribution to both Smyrna High School as a theater, in the theater program and local community. Mrs. Williams was the only drama teacher at Smyrna High for over 20 years. She spent countless hours developing the program, supporting students, participating in volunteer opportunities in their community, and even working with students, current and former, on speeches and performances for interest outside of Smyrna High School, where she passed away, I think it was back in November, from brain cancer.
Any questions on that? Okay, let's move on.
All right, number 13 is, I think we've heard about this, but let's get more detail on it, the State of Arts Music Grant, found on Tab 3. Rutherford County Schools has been selected as a State of Arts, Arts Grant recipient. State of Arts Grant is funded by the CMA Foundation in conjunction with the Tennessee State Department of Ed. One district from each state's core region was selected through a competitive grant application process for the inaugural grant cycle, and Rutherford County Schools is in the Mid Cumberland, is the Mid Cumberland grantee. The state collaborative on Reforming Education, SCORE, will serve as the fiscal agent for this grant. The grant amount is 124,000 to be dispersed over a three-year period. Funds will be used for music teacher professional development and for repair, replace and maintenance program of Rutherford County School musical instruments following an intensive inventory analysis. Lindsay Halford, the Rutherford County Schools Fine Arts Specialist, will serve as the project manager for the grant implementation.
Any questions on that? Number 14.
Business. Okay, this was the, the discussion of the substitute vendors. I will start off by saying that this is a, we've, we've gone back and we've had more, more, more talk on this, had the whole, the whole process, and I'm going to let Mr. Sandbig and Dr. Anthony talk a little bit about what we're going to, what we're doing, going to do going forward and what we've done already.
Okay, so we have been discussing again, going back and reviewing our packets, and we were really looking at especially our top three vendors and discussing, again, we wanted to share items that we felt were very important in those top three. Some of the other vendors that we had out of the seven just did not meet our criteria that we needed. So I would like to review the bottom three from your chart, which is in the portion that I deal with. So talking about Staff E Z when it comes to the fill rates for the large school system. The current program we have right now has a 97% fill rate by 7:00 AM. Our fill rates right now range from 93 to 96 on average due to the call-ins after 7:00 AM. I believe we have, we've had in the past year about 5,000, a little bit over 5,000 calls up to this date that were after 7:00 AM, so that's definitely been a challenge. I think last time we discussed, after we looked at more data, that's about 6% of our calls are made after 7:00 AM. And that, because it's a challenge, and some of the information that we're gathering from the principals right now, we have a survey that's out, and they'll be fishing that up next week, but some of the things that they've been sharing is the challenge of those that are call-ins after 7:00 AM, trying to get people to come in at the last minute. Also, we, number two, our second item was on Advantage. Advantage, of course, we have had them in the past, and they have been able to sustain a 90 to 92% fill rate. And so they have been in three different previous Tennessee districts, ESS. Also, Metro uses them. We discussed how that they were using them, especially for their hard-to-fill schools, schools that they were having a 50% or less fill rate for. When I talked to Metro, they said they were able to get most of them up to 65%. Smaller than us, Bedford County, I talked to Andrew Miller, the HR Director over there, and they've been using ESS to help fill their rates, and they've been in the 90 rate plus fill rate. When it comes to the recruitment, retaining, and training, looking at those top three, three vendors for Staff E Z, one of the big areas that our department really emphasized is the face-to-face training, the in-person enrollment, multiple online modules for growth. And as we've asked for additional items to be added, or they see, as they survey their own substitutes, additional training opportunities are there for their staff. For Advantage Pro, they do their orientations and training programs, they do some classroom videos also through steady. And they also have always, when we've used them for the 17 previous years before PSG, met our standards on, on additional trainings. So their information is definitely face-to-face, and we like that opportunity as well. And then some online blended training. ESS, they do a lot of face-to-face provided by their, their local resources that they have, and we feel, again, that that's why those top three are very important to us in those areas. Some of the other ones that we have eliminated looking at, they did completely online training or no face-to-face time at all, all hiring and pre-hiring online with no face-to-face interactions. So our third area, our last area, was on the area of employment-related issues. When the area's on Staff E Z, the SWF paperwork emailed back to a When the area's on Staff EZ, the swift paperwork emailed back to HR from the schools. The process is very clear, where that if there is an issue at the school with a sub, then the principal and the staff has the ability to remove them from their school. Then the information comes to the district. So, that we're able to, if we need to do further information, remove them from a district standpoint, we're able to do. We have a lot of interactions with them on emails and phone calls daily about, you know, background checks, fingerprinting, all of their background fingerprinting does come through our office, so we have conversations about that. Advantage Pro would be the same way. We've had them in the past. They've always allowed the school board to have the exclusive rights to remove, and they do do the discipline handling for the district. ESS, they discussed in their plan that the department will work diligently to help the RCS team to hire an abundant of talented local subs. So, they are also a group that would work hand-in-hand with the district. And so, those are our top three areas, we feel like, that are essential in our HR duties, and all three of those vendors do meet our needs.
All right, Mr. Sandbig, is anything you want to add to that financially? On the finance side, and we awarded points accordingly. The Staff EZ proposals are the more expensive proposals. What we gain with those proposals is the 97% fill rate guarantee as of 7:00 a.m. And that makes PESG Staff EZ have, the additional charges go into paying bonuses, and they have a financial interest in us hitting that 97% fill rate target. On the tab sheet, the PESG alternate, which is their Schoolhouse Plus, that's what we've been using. When I annualized that 10-week period, that came in at $3,176,000. In that period, they had paid out $246,000 in these bonuses. Hard-to-play schools, working 10 or 20 days in a month, items like that. So, the difference between their proposal and Advantage XPO's base cost, if you adjust for that, there is not a lot of difference. We are paying out more money, but it is to get that higher fill rate. The Staff EZ, formerly PESG, what we call the standard plan, it drops back a bit. We don't have as many guarantees, but the target is still that 97% fill rate. Now, Advantage XPO, they are proposing a similar, not as rich, but a similar bonus plan for the subs who work so many days a month. And they are saying that they will pay for that out of their admin fee, with no upcharge. They are clearly, cost-wise, given that, that they will continue to pay those bonuses if it is comparable to what PESG has been paying. That could be 200, 220,000 a year out of their admin fee, if the fill rate and the consistency of the subs is constant. And then ESS, they were the fourth, well, I'm sorry, they were the third provider. I'm saying fourth because we've got two alternatives, PESG, Staff EZ. Their cost percentage was a little bit higher than the Advantage XPO, not a great deal, but they do not propose a comparable bonus or incentive program. Those are the cost aspects.
One of the things, you know, we've been around and around with this decision. I felt like that perhaps on my part, it was my fault, communication. One of the things we're going to be doing going forward, as we put on our RFP, we're going to get more input from those that are actually using the subs in the buildings. We'll get representation from the board, and give it more opportunity to see what is it we can do better. Now, we're not going to, at this time, even tomorrow, we're not going to make a recommendation. We're going to give you the options and allow the board to make that recommendation. I think to do, to make a recommendation would be short-sighted on our part, because we have had an issue of perhaps maybe, not intentionally, but some communication, where we were able to give you a good idea as far as why we felt like this is the best recommendation. I think there was concerns about the weighting, as on the HR side and on the finance side. And I talked to Mr. Sandbig, so I'm sure he's not going to get upset with me, but this is an HR thing. This will be an HR thing going forward, that's independent from our finance, but it's also interdependent. So, HR will take on a bigger role, because this is where it needs to be, quite frankly. And the information that you develop, the people you get to serve on that committee as you craft that RFP, which should be some of those that we get our input across our district, those that are working with the subs.
Hi, any comments?
So, Director Sperlock, and thank you for that. So, I guess I need a little clarification as to, and I understand what you're saying in that, obviously, the decision rests with the board anyway, regardless of input from RFPs or whatever. We're really getting down to the wire here.
Right.
As far as what we're going to put on, the monstrous task we're going to put on our human resources department if we were to decide to change vendors, so.
I'm looking for next year going forward. That's the, I may have not been clear, maybe a lack of communication again. Next year going forward, we're going to, it's going into the lap of HR. But this year, you're right, we're under the guns, so to speak, in terms of making a decision, do we stay with our current vendor, or do we go in a different direction?
Thank you for that clarification. So, I guess my next question would be to Dr. Anthony. I mean, it's May. What is it going to look like in your world if we do make a change at this point? And I need you to be.
Really honest, okay. Well, we know that every vendor has a third-party software. And so, if we were to change that, that would be a new, Mr. Sandbig, you correct me if I'm wrong, there would be a new additional area that we would have to make sure we are importing all of the teachers and classified employees into that software after we are trained on it to learn how to use it ourselves. So, there would be training on our part, for our department, Mr. Sandbig's department. And then also, when it comes down to the principals, our secretaries, bookkeepers, those who have access to that, and then falling down to our teachers. So, the time is of the essence. We have limited access to some of those people that would have to be trained in those areas. And so, just, and even the time to set up the vendor, if there were to be a change, that's a challenge. So, it's very crucial that we make this decision so that we can have time to give those opportunities if the board selected a different vendor.
Sounds to me like, if I'm understanding correctly, that we're already running out of time really to do that. So, refresh my memory, because then I don't have the notes from the other meetings. Is this decision to, is it a total renewal of the contract? And what was the term for, or are we just looking at an extension?
Each of our contracts that are provided from Staff EZ, Advantage, or ESS are one year with the opportunity to renew for two additional years.
Okay, okay, so, but we're only locked into.
Correct, one year at a time.
Regardless of what the decision winds up being.
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Sandbig, you, going back to and talking about the numbers.
Yes, sir.
And as I've said many times before, you know, sometimes you get what you pay for. And I'm not suggesting that any of these services wouldn't do a good job. But I know that PESG has made some commitments. For instance, go back and talk to me and refresh my memory about, they've made a commitment to us, and I believe it's already been called a task on, that if they don't meet certain standards, they wind up having to pay us back.
Yes.
Go back and walk us through that, because I believe that they've actually, at one point, had to write a big check back to us, didn't they?
Mr. Bledsoe was none too happy, a check for $11,000 during our first year.
Now, which year was that, again?
Three years back.
16, 17?
Yeah. Yeah, because we did not hit that 97% fill rate in the ramping up period.
Okay, and so, how far off were they? But when we talk about a 97% fill rate, I mean, can you?
About 50, 500 absences that we don't get calls on until, we don't even know about the absence until after 7:00 a.m. So, you can't fill what you don't know. So, it ends up being, you know, we fill 97% to 99%, 100% of that 35,000 roughly absences that are left. We fill them, and the ones that we're notified at eight or seven, eight or nine o'clock in the morning, we're still filling all those throughout the day. So, then there's an end-of-day number that we provide. So, yeah, that's.
So, is that the only time in the contract with them that they've had to write us a check back?
That they had.
I assume that means that the fill rate expectations in the contract have been met since. On the new RFPs and the proposals that we've got from the other staffing services, have any of them made a commitment that they would write us a check back if they didn't meet the required fill rates?
That would be if we went with the Schoolhouse Plus, which is in layout of the RFP. We would not have that with the.
They go to, like a Laverne High or others where we need, where we need someone on staff every morning, and it's hard to get people. So, all those bonuses comprise about 246,000.
In one year?
And your payroll, the payroll volume is 2.1 million, so it's a core, I understand, it's 2.1 million in payroll. And so, 246,000 is actually about 12%.
So, if we change services, go with another. And I guess Advantage is the only one that we've had experience with in the past. What was their fill rate when they exited the scene?
Miss Barnes, said six percentage points lower.
Lower than what we're getting currently.
Than what we got initially with PESG. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. But again, any of the others, if we do decide to make a change, if that fill rate doesn't get satisfied, we don't have any kind of payback guarantee like we do with PESG?
Yeah.
All right, I think you've answered my questions. Thank you.
Chairman, if I remember correctly here, when we made the change, and they got hit with this $11,000 payback, they came back and asked us to increase the pay for our subs. And I think that has a little bit of an impact as far as meeting their fill rate.
It, well, and I think, and I did not understand the ramification of your question back then, and, or one aspect of it. Yes, what Mr. Bledsoe's proposal was, he was trying to get our fill rate up higher, and he felt because of what neighboring systems were paying, and this was particular on certified teachers, wasn't it? Yeah, in order to get our fill rate up on certified teachers, we would need to increase our daily pay. And as you pointed out, and this was a point I missed on, since their administrative fee is percentage-based, yes, it would have increased funds going to them on the administrative side.
And then two, if we look at this, if we're going to do the comparison, we're not really comparing apples to apples, because Staff EZ or PESG, we're paying their subs more than what the other company, Advantage, was paying.
Well, we did, yes, we did a dollar increase as part of that switch. Yes, we built a raise.
I don't know how we really compare, and we didn't, we're not playing by the same rules here. We changed the rules. Okay. And then, as far as $11,000 goes, if you go back to administration fees that Advantage is willing to waive, that's around how much money?
Yeah, no, that's, again, by proposing to include the bonuses for working 10, 20 days a month to cover them within their exist, their proposed base admin fee, that it, that makes them clearly the low bid responder in this, yes. If I were to make any adjustments, I would, after thinking that over, I probably would have taken Advantage XP up to 50 points on total fees. That would have not changed the overall ranking, but it would have gotten it closer.
But what I'm saying here is they're willing to waive about $200,000 here.
Yes, sir.
Where PESG only paid us $11,000 one time.
Right.
I just want to make that point.
Questions? Next is the policy manual review I told you about for Board of Distinction. We'll go on to number 16.
All right, facilities used approved for exemption pursuant to Board Policy 3.206. Public education, schools, and institutions, and post-secondary education institutions, private universities and colleges, and governmental entities or agencies that provide benefits to the Rutherford County school system or have an in-kind relationship approved by the Director of Schools may request the Board of Education to allow an exemption for the use of facilities fee, which the Board may allow or deny based upon details of the specific request. The following groups qualify for the exemption. American Red Cross, the Blood Drive at Stewart Creek High School Auxiliary Gym, Stones River Fraternal Order of Police, Charity Dodge Ball at Stewart's Creek High School Gym, Kitterell Alumni Reunion Committee, Annual Kitterell Reunion at Kitterell Elementary School Gym and Cafeteria, Murfreesboro Baseball Association Practices at Barfield Ball Field, and Rutherford Works Code Camp at Rocky Fork Middle School, Barfield, Stewart's Creek Middle School, and their computer labs.
Questions? Okay, number 17.
Number 17 is a change order to Segal High School addition and renovations credit change order. RD Anderson Incorporated has submitted a change order, number two, to deduct the remaining allowance monies in the amount of $163,609.15 for allowances not used during the Segal High School renovation additions and projects. The final cost of the contract will be $6,362,390.85.
Questions on that? Okay. Number 18.
18 is the Boardmanship Code of Ethics policy found on Tab 6.
This is something else we have to vote on every couple of years, and it has not changed. Is that correct? Okay. Questions? We'll go on to insurance update.
Our meeting is tomorrow, and at the meeting, on the agenda they descend, they had the FSA, Flexible Spending Account. There's lots to talk about, the finalists, have some presentations and selections. So, that's the main item on the agenda tomorrow, so we'll have that update tomorrow night.
Thank you. Directors update.
We'll have something tomorrow night.
All right. ELN?
Something tomorrow night.
Mr. Hyde, Federal. General discussion.
Worried about Mr. Baum, who I appreciated being here, and I didn't want to really necessarily bring this up while he was here. I think that this, as I said earlier, this is going to be a very difficult program to administer, and it's, there are just going to be problems, I'm afraid. But I'd like to look at it in a more positive light. He did mention about the tuitions at various private schools, and he was exactly right, I think, on what he said. He did say, though, I think this is going to be an era, but I guess we're going to find out. He said if that, that a lot of that money might not be claimed because it would not pay for private school tuition. pay for private school tuition. If you stop right there, he's exactly right. You can't get into Montgomery Bell Academy with $7,300 or a lot of other places, too. And he even mentioned our local schools. What he's forgetting is that there's $7,000, $7,300 out there in the hands of a lot of people, and they will build a school. The schools that are gonna administer this program haven't even been built yet, in my opinion.
You're right. I would agree with you, Mr. Jordan. One of the things I caught that it was concerning to me also, and I know I'd read it, but it doesn't necessarily have to be a failing school. And a lot of these, a lot of these private schools, and he mentioned this also, scholarship, you know, they could scholarship the best athlete, you know, in Rutherford County.
I'll just make a general comment. I was encouraged by the things that he's, I took it that he's actually done. I don't know if the rest of them had anything to do with it or not. The list of five items, some of you may have been more aware of that than I was, but on our behalf, I guess some of the requests we put there, I guess he's worked at it. As far as the request I put at him, we didn't get, I didn't get nowhere. But I was encouraged to see that he has did things on our behalf, and I'd probably be interested to see what the rest of them do.
Sir? Anyone else?
Well, I'll just chime in here. I just, again, and I know we're all disappointed in the fact that our entire delegation voted for this bill, and if, unless I misunderstood Representative Baum's response to me, I don't think there was any argument or disagreement when I made the comment about where did the constituency really lie as far as majority and how people felt about this. So, I don't know. It's just very, very discouraging to me that we have elected officials that are passing something like this, that they really don't even know what's in it or what kind of impact it's gonna have. He referenced the word experiment several times, when indeed, the majority, overwhelming majority from everything that I have seen, whether it's on social media, whether it's in the press, whether it's in the people that were in their offices and making phone calls, their constituents very clearly said, "We don't want this." And I just think that's sad.
Okay. Anyone else?
If we're done, let's end on a happy note. I got an email this week from Lamar Davis at Riverdale, who's a friend and swimming coach and one of the best math teachers in America. Well, okay, Tennessee. Anyway, he is the annual sponsor for the Brave the Shave event that they have out there every year. And he wanted to be sure that we knew, and that maybe I would announce it, which I'm doing now, that event raised over $56,000 to help fight and conquer childhood cancer by, and the Riverdale students, of course, were the main sponsors of this. The event consisted of 125 students, teachers, alumni, members of the military, moms, dads, and one grandmother. And he said they have raised over $167,000 the last six years to fight cancer. And I think that's terrific.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Not, I'll finish it up. We have a valuation instrument from Mr. Spurlock. We would like for you to have that in the mail by May the 9th. We will have you envelopes tomorrow. Is that, May 9th is correct, right? Isn't that what we decided? Okay. Thank you, ma'am. We'd like to have it in so they could get it and compile it and get it back to us. Okay? All right, we are adjourned.